Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to June 15, 2015. It's council meeting. Half of the year is gone already. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off, and we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence to be observed, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown. Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Mayor and councilmembers comments. I mean, councilmembers comments this evening. Andy?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let folks know the Build Albion Fellows program has started at Albion College on June 1. We have seven fellows, and they've been hired by Albion's Buildings and Grounds Department and have engaged in training, traditional lawn care, and working for grounds and all sorts of projects, including moving wood that was harvested from the nature center after the microburst last year, planting of bulbs and annual planting around campus and lawn care throughout the campus. They've been in the community working on sprucing up the Mulder Park at the corner of Superior and Michigan and are working with the Healthcare Alliance downtown. This week, they will participate in the Chamber of Commerce's golf outing at Duck Lake where they hope to meet and network with local business leaders. On Wednesday, they will be spending the day at Holland Park at the community build there. The Build Albion Fellows are also taking a class at Albion College, IDY 189 Albion 101, a practical introduction to Albion College that aims to show students how they can find success and opportunity at Albion College. This course introduces the Build Albion Fellows to the community of Albion College, engages them in academic skill development and training, and introduces students to faculty and their ways of teaching their classes and providing an introduction to the peer mentoring structures that exist on Albion's campus. This week, the fellows worked on writing skills with Professor Nell's Christensen. They're also working on a logo design and visioning about the community service projects that they will do during their time at Albion. I wanted to personally thank Carla Summerhour, Albion High School graduate and Albion College rising senior, and Matty Drury for their help with the running of the program. Both of these young people work very hard to help our fellows with the everyday challenges they face and provide them with tools to succeed. So, if you see some college students driving around in gators through town, they are on their way to helping revitalize some part of our city. Give them a shout out and hello. They always appreciate your support. And if you have any ideas of projects that need doing in Albion, please feel free to contact me. My number is (517) 414-1138. Thanks a lot on behalf of Albion College and the Build Albion Fellows. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Maurice?
This comment concerns a possible projective proposal concerning sick leave time for Albion city employees. I do not make policy and procedure, or the city manager does. This is meant to be totally positive. I talked with some union and non-union city employees, and they had some concerns about a possible projected proposal. I'm just requesting that when we do take in proposals that the proposals present both the punitive actions and the beneficial actions. There should be a positive and a negative side of the proposal. There's nothing etched in stone, and everything is preliminary, but I usually ride around town and talk to the employees, and when they contacted me, I truly explained to them that's a situation for the city manager and her entirely. I'm just a councilman who does policy and procedure. However, you know, in talking with them and trying to help morale and keeping the city at a level that we really want to keep employees who really want to work with us, that I ask that the proposals be a teeter-totter that it shows both sides of the issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This afternoon, we broke ground at Holland Park, and on Wednesday at 8:00, we will start the build at Holland Park. We've talked with the people from Knox, and they have said that if it is raining, it is okay as long as there is no lightning. So even if it's drizzling, please just put on your raincoat. Come on out because we'll be there working. And we invite people in the community, you know, if you've got some time, come out and help us out.
We also had the groundbreaking today at 3:00. It was...
I just... yeah, I mentioned.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Take that off of the tape. All right, if that is it, we'll move on to the public hearing. Set the 2015 milage rate. I open the public hearing for our citizens to come forward. If you have any questions or comments, please come forward, your name and your address, and about our public milage rates for 2015.
Mayor, would you like me to at least read the history? That's a part of the resolution so that people will know.
Okay, you can do that if you would like to, Cheryl.
All right, the City Council of the City of Albion must determine the level of funding in the general operation fund for the fiscal year 2015. The ad valorem taxable value of real and personal property within the city of Albion as determined by the city's assessor is $90,882,410. The City Council is to hold this public hearing today to receive public comment regarding proposed tax levies, which would levy a general operating tax rate of 11.9736 mils, retain a tax levy of 2.0 mils for solid waste, levy a voted tax of 3.0 mils dedicated to street improvement, and levy 1.52 mils for water plant debt, and levy a voted tax of 1.5 mils for recreation.
Now, are there any questions from the citizens? Still no questions. Well, the public hearing is closed. We will go to the council. Do you have any debate or decide, you know, do it now? I see none.
So we're moving to 10A, or we just?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that was all part of that. Then we'll pick it up again in the other meeting, am I correct, down below?
Yep.
We have the approval. Okay, presentations. A, encourage neighborhood watch groups by voting districts. Maggie Lanier, please.
Hello, I'm Maggie Lanier from 1102 East Cheek Avenue in Albion. And I have a few words about the Neighborhood Watch. We had a champion named Hazel Vandevender who helped to establish several groups in Albion with regular meetings. She helped us get funding from the Kellogg Foundation for an Albion Neighborhood Watch flag that I hope to be able to show you later this evening. It has been brought out of the fall where we couldn't find it, and it should be here later. Now Hazel is not with us any longer. The groups are not as active, but we do have the flag, and we have some new resources. Our Neighborhood Watch groups have worked with Albion Public Safety, but the groups are not run by Albion Public Safety. On Friday, July 3, we will have Albion fireworks, and there will also be a pig roast before the fireworks at the Albion Legion Hall by Barnes Park. They will be setting up a table with the flag so that we can get interested people to sign up and to get more information about the new Neighborhood Watch system in Albion. The new Neighborhood Watch groups can use an app called Nextdoor. And the Nextdoor app helps to... It works with local safety and crime prevention, but it also can be used for other community activities and plans such as missing pets, carpooling, cotle dinners, bicycle riding groups, and weather emergencies. The groups can sponsor cleanups of residential areas. They can encourage use of porch lights in neighborhoods. They can post reference links to websites to cover bowling games, senior safety, Halloween safety, and internet safety. With the Nextdoor system, our Neighborhood Watch groups don't have to have regular meetings, but we can use the system to set up meetings when it seems like a good idea. Currently, there are 22 Albion residents already using the Nextdoor dot com free system. The system is already used by many cities across the U.S. I was at a family reunion last weekend and mentioned this app to some relatives, and I had relatives in Colorado and Maryland who were already using it. We will have a sign up at the Pig Roast Barnes Park July 3, and we'll be getting more information out in other ways about how to sign up for Nextdoor to Albion churches, volunteers, through email, Albion V News, and Facebook. As we get more people to sign up, we'll begin to split up the Albion Nextdoor group by voting precinct and even down to the neighborhoods. In the future, we can work with the town hall programs to get more feedback from the groups who are representatives. Do you have any questions?
No, but Scott does have a flag.
Oh, yeah, it is. Let's hold it up. As you can see, we have an officer on the bicycle, so it's ready to go, and the Forks of the River. And this represents the communities, and the theme was unity and diversity. And that's something that the Kellogg Foundation wanted us to emphasize, and they matched the hymns that we had off the Festival of Forks. And it matches the theme of the forks because that also shows unity and diversity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for father-son picnic for Gregory Gant. Please step forward.
Resolution of appreciation, father-son picnic, June 20, 2015. Whereas the purpose of the father-son's picnic is for fathers to build stronger relationships with their son. Whereas it provides an opportunity for young men whom, for whatever the circumstances, do not have a father in their life. And whereas the organizers of the fathers in some picnic would like to see the older and younger generation having a better understanding of each other. And the father-son's picnic will be held Saturday, June 20, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. at Victory Park in Albion. And whereas there will be food, games, and different activities for the men and boys to enjoy. Whereas the father-son's picnic has been held annual since 2011, and although the focus is on fathers and sons, it is important to note that families of women and girls are more than welcome to attend. Now therefore, being resolved by Joe D'Anico, Mayor, along with the Albion City Council encourages everyone to support the father-son's picnic. Pay tribute to all the fathers and men who are mentors and positive role models as we celebrate Father Day.
A few words? Thank you. This is very important. I've worked at that company for two years, and I knew what it was to be, for this to happen. And I just admired it for a long time. And four years ago, or five years ago, now we just made it happen. And I'm very appreciative to the city of Albion for their support. You, all the businesses that support it, and I'm excited, and I'm really looking forward to just growing and getting better. Yep.
Thank you, group. Do what?
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Gant. Thank you.
Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only in no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any comments this evening on the agenda? See none. Excuse me. Consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from June 1, 2015?
So moved.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions on the agenda? If not, voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. If asked, it's... thank you. Items for individual discussion. Request approval, resolution number 2015-19 to set. 2015 milage rates?
So moved.
Moved and supported. Questions? Yes?
I would just action at our city manager giving executive summary to the public.
Okay. The two primary things to take note of that in terms of our overall tax levy and ad valorem rate, it has increased approximately 3% from the $93 million to the 2015 levy of $90.8 million. So that's a change of approximately $3 million. It's a line of $3 million. The milage rates themselves are unchanged with the exception of the debt service, which had to be increased in order to accommodate the change in the taxable value so that we can meet our obligations for our debts. So the general fund remains at 11.9736. Solid waste is 2 mils. The debt service went from 1.3 to 1.52. Street improvements remains at 3 mils, and the recreation is the 1.5 mils.
Yes?
In layman's terms, would it be fair for me to say that citizens consider our general fund our checkbook and that we're doing this so we can keep the city of Albion safe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Boards and commission appointments? I'll read them unless anybody has any doubt about any of them as I read. Chris Farmer, reappointed to the building authority, term to expire 6/30/18. Alina Brug?
Yes.
The initial term for the appointment of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Greg Polynaski?
Polnaski.
Okay. International... initial appointment to the City Advisory Committee to expire 12/31/15. Scott Brown, initial appointment to the Locals Officers Compensation Board, term to expire 12/31/2015. Are there any questions? Yes?
So is the Local Officers Compensation Board always a six-month appointment? Or is this someone filling out?
No, he's finishing out Jim Novos.
Oh, right. Thank you. Thank you. Yep.
I do have a question. The appointments to Citizens Advisory Committee, is that just going to be a short-term thing?
Yes, isn't that six months?
For the recreation? Just for the six months? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience? I read their name. Please stand up. I'll bet you... are you Greg?
Greg Polnaski.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, roll call vote, or excuse me, voice vote on all.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further questions? If not, voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. They all pass, and we all congratulate you very much. Request for approval, resolution 2015-20 to encourage neighborhood watch groups by voting district.
So moved. Support.
Moved and support. Questions? I'm going to assume that's going to be a roll call vote?
Yeah, it's a resolution.
That what? We can do a voice on that one? Okay?
Actually, it's a resolution. You probably can't.
I think you have to say a roll call.
That would make more sense being a resolution.
That's what I was thinking. I don't think the outcome's going to change.
Ordinance is a resolution. Yeah.
Okay. It'll be a roll call vote? Please?
Councilmember Decker.
Aye.
Kraus.
Pardon?
Did you say aye or yes?
I said yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Need a report from the city manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we've been looking forward to the Erie Street reconstruction, and unfortunately, we have received notice that their contractor is falling a little behind on their current job. So it was to start the week of June 8. It's now been postponed until the week of June 29 for the start. But the contractor, Nashville Construction, is still required to complete the project per the progress schedule, or there are penalties in regard to the contract documents. So we're still hoping to get that completed by the end of summer. And unfortunately, you may have heard of the passing of Homer Fire Department Chief Michael Hawkins. The visitation is tomorrow, and the funeral is on Wednesday. And those services are at Kemp Funeral Home in Homer. We're really excited that Oaklawn Hospital is in the process of expanding their services here and providing Albion residents and surrounding residents with a dialysis center. It is already gone before the zoning board of appeals. It goes to the City Planning Commission tomorrow. I don't anticipate any challenges relative to the board approval. And that's a $2.5 to $3 million project, so it will be bringing jobs as well as access to medical care here in Albion. And I think it'll also be beneficial to our local restaurants and service organizations and stores. So we're very excited about that coming here. They hope to break ground within a few weeks. In fact, it'll be open by the end of the year. And as was mentioned, Holland Park had their groundbreaking today, and as only councilmember Reed can do, she stopped the rain. So they were able to have the groundbreaking on schedule. And also, I just want to say thank you to all of the volunteers and to Albion College for supporting the Knox Presbyterian Group. They're already here on site working on a number of things. In fact, they had a little extra resources because the group themselves, although they're coming here to volunteer, they donated $5,000 themselves to help here. So we assisted in raising the matching funds. So one of the projects they were able to add was Harris Field. So they're replacing the bleachers and painting there and including concession stands. So we're really appreciative of what they're doing here in the community. And they will be at the Holland Park on Wednesday as well as doing a number of projects in terms of home repairs and upkeep throughout the neighborhood. Again, thank you to the Knox Presbyterian Group. And many of you were here earlier. We had the official installation and chartering of the Junior Optimists Club, a new youth leadership organization for our youth here in the community. So we're very excited about what they're going to be doing in terms of their community service projects and their leadership opportunities. And we are recognizing a double header for Employees of the Month. We have both Public Safety Officers Eric Chard and Bill Timmons were recognized because of their just excellence and due diligence in terms of their investigation and just teamwork. So we're very proud of them and recognizing them this month. And finally, last but not least, I have the most wonderful French intern here, Marie McConde, who is here for six months. And I just wanted to introduce her to everyone if you want to say hello.
So hello, everybody. Thank you. So my name is Marie McConde. I'm here for a six-month internship until Christmas. In September, I will enter my third year of study. I'm in a business school in Paris. And last year, I spent six months in Spain. So I speak French, Spanish, and English. And I will work on a project to promote our connection beyond the political community.
Very good. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Marie. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Future agenda items? Yes? Austin Avenue, specifically buildings 606, 608, and 610.
Holland Park.
Nothing more? Motion to excuse that from councilmember?
So moved. Did he call in?
Yes.
Okay. So moved. Already moved. Support.
Moved and supported.
My hearing aid battery died.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Please come forward with your name and your address, please.
I'm just pleased to be here. I'm here at Edward Street, Albion. And I'm here with my members and citizens of Albion. And we are here to comment on the staff that employees of the city of Albion. We are very appreciative for all the support that we have gotten and all the things that they have done. And we drive by and we walk by, and we say nice job to ourselves, but we don't say it to them. And I think we have to be more positive and reinforce the job well done from our city employees. And one of the main things was, you know, we did our flower picking, and we had a car for our protection because people seem to be more and more distracted when they were driving. And the scariest time was Thursday. We were out weeding on our main street. We had our coats, we had our bright safety kind of vests. We were right on the curb. So we were always aware of, hey, you know, move in because there's a ceremony coming, Jenice, you know. We were aware of each other. But Thursday, these people were just so distracted in their driving, whatever they're doing in that car. They're not paying attention to homes, to other, you know, a tight safety barrier, that it scared me for the first time in 25-plus years that I've been weeding. So I asked to have a patrol car maybe parked with the flashing lights and so on, to stay. And it happened. So we are very appreciative of the support that we get from the city employees, you know. And we work hand in hand in a lot of things to do to lead the Albion, to keep it clean, and to make it better for everybody. And we want to applaud the staff and the workers of the city of Albion, whatever it means to us, and others.
Thank you.
At the festival, the victim and I is cleaned up. All the garbage is gone. You have, you know, the snow, you have trees down, you have ranches down, you have garbage, whatever. It is done. And I know that they go above and beyond. And even though they're getting paid, they carry enough on our community to go above and beyond when we're in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would agree with you because at the park,
I would agree with you, because at the park, they've been so kindly, Harry, Mr. Litterson, and who's the other guy that works? Can't think of his name, but he comes in, if he sees the limbs hanging real low on the trees where we were planting, he was...
Kevin Monroe.
Driven them off. Yeah. And they've been very, very helpful, very helpful.
Okay. Yes.
And I also wanted to comment, I did notice for the first time that you, that the Public Safety Department had cruisers out there that were blocking as the planting was going on, because as Mrs. Kidder said, I also have noticed that there's a lot of distracted driving going on, and that was one thing that really, really made me feel much better about the fact that the planting was going on today, so again, thank you to the city staff.
Yes.
Concerning drivers and speed, Kennedy and Cooper, chief, again, it's summer, and I'm having several cars speeding, I'm identifying the drivers, I'm getting license plate numbers, I am contacting some of these people, because I know who they are. However, I'm just hopeful that officers have some time, please come by and write some tickets, because it's needed. I mean, I got so many kids playing over in the housing complex, and I am contacting some of them personally, and I'm sure they're upset that I'm saying it's on TV, but they're speeding after that bad accident, I'm turning in everybody. Thank you. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I forgot to mention that we need to schedule a special meeting on Monday, the 29th, in order to go over the audit report, so I just need an indication from the councilmembers that 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock would be the preferred time.
5:00 is not.
I was going to say 6:00 is better for me.
Yeah.
6?
6 works out for everyone.
6:00, the 29th, a special meeting on the audit. Everybody agree?
Sure.
Outstanding. We'll be here on the 29th at 6:00 to discuss the audit.
Yes, we will.
Thank you very much. There is no further...
Will these people be on TV or not?
No.
No? How do we dress?
Any way you want. Cool. Wear clothes.
To be dressed.
If there is no further, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you all very much, and have a wonderful evening.